We'll call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, November 16th. Please rise for the invocation from Craig Swerengen from the vineyard and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, I just, we come before you today and thank you for all your blessings upon Canyon City. We ask for your favor and your grace and your compassion to continue on this great city. We thank you for all the plans you have for it, plans of goodness and greatness for this city, Lord. So, we just ask for that. I thank you for all those who volunteer, all those who commit to make this a great city to live in. I ask you to bless all of those people that do that, Lord. On a more broader note, just remember all the families and lives that are affected in Paris with those attacks. Be with those families and that country in this time, Lord, just strengthen their hearts. Ask for your peace. Jesus' name, amen.
Mayor Greer.
Here.
Council members Brown.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Sharaki.
Here.
Frida. We have a quorum.
Approval of the minutes from November 2nd, regular city council meeting and November 4th, general government committee meeting. Are there any corrections? Counselor?
Mayor, on the November 2nd, regular city council meeting minutes on page 3, ordinance number 13, series of 2015, the third paragraph talks about the report from Mr. Havens. Item number one, to allow outdoor grow areas, I would suggest we add for medical marijuana patients only, and that's my request.
Anybody have a problem with that change? Any other changes? May I have a motion, please? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation, we approve the minutes of November 2nd, 2015, general, regular city council meeting as amended, and November 4th, 2015, public works committee meeting.
Second.
Councilwoman Frida, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Any council member announcements? Councilwoman Frida?
Yes, there is a planning commission meeting here tomorrow at 7:00.
Earl? Yeah, okay.
Tuesday.
Councilman Ekstrom?
Thank you. Public Works Committee meeting this Wednesday at 4:00.
Wednesday at 4:00, okay. Any other announcements? All right, move on to the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Doug, review the consent agenda items, please.
Consent agenda for this evening, the first item is to authorize a city administrator's signature on a service contract. This is with a company called The Preservation Studio, Inc. of Colorado Springs, in the amount of $6,000. This contractor will be responsible for working on the red roof restoration project at the museum, and it will be coordinating with the state historic fund to make sure everything's done properly, and with hired contractors that would be working on the project to ensure that all work meets the Secretary of the Interior's treatment for historic properties. The consultant, the contractor, Preservation Studio, Inc., their funds would be covered under the state historic fund grant, and so that would be covered as part of the overall grant, and the city would have a match as part of that. This service contract is with the state, the funds are coming, I should say, from the state historic fund. Next item is to authorize a temporary streets closure. This is for the closure of the 1500 block of Main Street on Friday, November 21st, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM for the Chamber of Commerce tree lighting event. We are doing this, so just in case we decide that we would have to close the street, we could do that. We've been working with Lisa to come up with other options if we should need to do that, and so we'll be working on that. So, we'll be working with the chamber to make sure that we can take care of that event and get the street closed as it need to be done.
Doug, is that Friday, November 27 or 21?
27. That's for Friday, the day, did I say the 21st?
You said the 21st.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was checking.
November 27, that's the Friday right after Thanksgiving, so hopefully people that have been out enjoying Thanksgiving will come and attend the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, just so people know where that's at, the 1500 block. There's a huge evergreen tree just to the east of the Papa Murphy's, in that area there where the rotary signs and those signs are at, that's the tree that will be let up, so hopefully it'll be a good community event. Next item is to authorize the mayor's signature on a contract amendment. We already have a contract with the Colorado Historical Society, which is the state historic fund, same thing. The state historic fund gave us, as you all know, a grant to rehabilitate the library, and that project is largely complete. We did a change order as part of that project to change out some of the money that was originally budgeted for, some landscape work and some other items to transfer that money into fixing up those back steps that, you know, come off the backside of the library, the emergency exit steps, and so we have to go through a contract amendment with the state historic fund to be able to do that. The state historic fund actually approved that contract adjustment. The person that approved it actually left, and it was not documented, so that's why we're going through this process with them. So, basically, this is a paperwork exercise, just to make sure everything is done. There are no city funds that will go into this, other than the matching funds that we've already spent, and this is really just transferring the grant funds, so we can include them for the stair expenses. Next item is bid number 38. This is the Oil Creek Ditch improvements. This would be to Avalanche Excavating of Canyon City, in the amount of $107,178 plus a 10% contingency, for a total award not to exceed $117,895.80. The Oil Creek Ditch improvements are those ditch improvements at the intersection of East Main and Steinmeier. Those improvements are going to be necessary in order to advance the Highway 50 Dozier intersection project that CDOT will be working on next year, that the city is a partner in that project. There were six bids that were received. This vendor was the low bid, and I would want to point out that these funds are included in the 2016 budget. Okay, the next item is bid number 13. This is for the Tunnel Drive Trailhead. This also went to Avalanche Excavating of Canyon City, in the amount of $177,223.36, plus a 10% contingency, the total award not to exceed $204,000. This is to reconstruct the Tunnel Drive Trailhead. That would be including the parking, the installation of restroom facilities up in that area, to provide better access to the trail. This is for a grant administered by CDOT, that's where the funds would come from. This particular vendor, there were three bids that received, this vendor was the low bidder. Again, I'd want to point out that these funds are budgeted in the 2016 budget. Number 40 is for pipe, for the engineering department. This would be to precast concepts of Henderson, Colorado, in the amount of $166,445.60. The pipe material would be to complete the stormwater improvement at Orchard and Central Avenues. There were two bids that were received, this bid, the bidder was the low bid, and again, I'd want to point out that these funds are included in the 2016 budget. Number 41, this is for the Royal Park, Rogorge Park Road resurfacing. As has been pointed out in several meetings, the roads up at the Rogorge Park are not necessarily easily to travel, a lot of the drainage and rutting problems that occurred with the rains and the runoff here in recent events. This work would go to Avalanche Excavating of Canyon City, in the amount of $22,300. So, it'd be resurfacing about three miles of gravel roads in the park, so that by next year, by next tourist season next year, the roads throughout the park, not just to the bridge, but also to the campgrounds and so on, would be easy to travel and to get around within the park. This bid is for equipment, labor, and the operators to do the work. The city will be providing the gravel material that will go on to the roads. These funds are included in the 2015 budget, so this work would be completed by the end of the year. Bid number 42, which is a Xerox imager for the police department to LaRonde, Pueblo, Colorado. This is a machine that would replace a current machine that is outdated, it would be replaced, that machine would be relocated to another part of the police department, so the new machine would give them a better machine to work with coming for the future. The state bid was utilized for this particular purchase, or will be utilized. This is a lease purchase agreement, so it would be covered over the three years, and there would be a three-year estimated savings of about $3,000 by purchasing this machine over the past lease, for the past equipment. And then finally, for this period, the list of bills for the last two-week period.
Are there any additions or corrections?
I have a question.
Councilman Weed?
Doug, on bid number, I just caught this, on bid number 39, the 10% contingency is for $26,776, which is not 10%, so 10% would be $17,722.33, which would make the total bid $194,945.63, so which one is correct?
I got those figures from the bid tab sheet, so that would be a question probably of Harry.
Here's what I would suggest, that as part of this, that we would go on and include a not to exceed $204,000, and if it is, if it does come out to $17,000, that would be ratcheted down then to something that would be less than the 204, that would be the only number then that would be spent. So, it'd be the $177,000 plus 10% contingency, and that would be the final number that would be spent, but it would not be more than 204,000.
Okay, well, if you went with the 10% contingency, then it would be a not to exceed
And what I'm suggesting is that, you know, for whatever reason that came from the bid tab sheet at $26,000, you know, I'm not sure why that got that way, but they had $204,000, so we would be approving not to exceed that, but if, in fact, it comes in at 10%, it would be the $194,000 number.
Well, we could just eliminate the 10% and just say, plus a contingency in the amount of...
I mean, we can do that, we can just say that's $17,000, not to exceed, what did...
So, Doug?
26, up to...
Just forget the percent.
Yeah, take out the...
Take out the 10%.
And just say not to exceed 204.
But I would also put in the amount up to $26,000, because it may be that we don't necessarily need that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And then not to exceed 204, and that number may actually come in at 194, whatever that was, and then that would be acceptable.
You want to make a motion to change that, Dennis?
Sounds like Harry was about to say something.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think if you look at the bid sheet, Avalanche total bid is $107,178, plus 10% is $10,717.80, in total of $117,895.80.
That's number 38, we're talking about number 39.
I think, Harry, that the solution that's been proposed will actually work.
Councilman Ekstrom?
Yeah, was the bid sheet even included here? It was in the minutes, right?
No, it's a bid tab sheet, number 39.
Because we should just be able to look at that and determine what it should be. Well, that would have been from the general government meeting, right?
Yeah, I think there's a calculation error.
Yeah, that...
I would agree, I think it's a calculation error.
So, your recommendation would be to correct the contingency amount, or...
Not to exceed 204,000.
Okay, just...
That might be better.
Okay.
And we will look, make sure that it is 10%, you know, in the contract.
I think if you included that language, the contingency is up to the 20, what was it, $26,000, and the total bid up to not to exceed 204, and it will adjust this then, and it would come in under the $204,000, so it'd be not to exceed.
Just say to do the bid in an amount not to exceed 204, and forget the other two amounts.
Want me to make a motion?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd like to make a motion to amend bid number 39, 15, to say an amount of $177,223.30, plus a contingency in the amount of up to $26,776.70, for a total amount not to exceed $204,000. Second?
Second, from Councilman Bates.
Point of order, that would, in my mind, create the possibility that the contingency could exceed 10%. Is that your intention?
Well, it's not really my intention. My question is, what, on the bid sheet, is it 10% or is it $26,000?
It's a mistake on the bid sheet.
So, I have the bid sheet here, and the bid was for 177, and if we, and who's dictating the 10%? Is that us as a city, or is that the...
That's the normal amount we have.
So, then, so then, let's correct the math and make it...
All right.
7, let's make it 17,700.
Well, then I'll use, I'll use my numbers, then I'm going to withdraw my motion, if I can do that.
Okay. You withdraw motion, withdraw second, now we're going to go back to another.
Same thing I...
Motion?
Actually, close. Yeah, okay, I make a motion to amend bid number 39 of series of 2015, to read an amount of $177,223.30, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $17,722.33, for a total amount not to exceed $194,945.63. I'll second that one.
Second by Councilman Bates, any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, now we have, now we're back to our agenda and our consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as amended. Councilman Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ekstrom, discussion on the motion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Wonderful, next is the administrators' report.
Just a couple of items for tonight. The sales tax revenues have continued to go up, so some good news. Comparing the month of October of this year to the month of October last year, about a 9.2% increase this year compared to last year. If you take a look at the information for the year-to-date through the end of October, it's up about 7.6 through the end of October this year, so that's all good news. Next item is that, as the council members probably know, we had a meeting not too long ago, city-county-city meeting with Florence and the county, where the main topic of discussion at that meeting was the transfer of the Gitmo detainees potentially into the United States somewhere, and potentially one of those locations being here, Florence Canyon City. After that meeting, or with that meeting, Florence and the county had both passed statements of position regarding that transfer, suggesting that they would prefer it going somewhere else, if it was, if it was going to go somewhere, they would prefer that it would be, that the 55 detainees that would be transferred would be split up among facilities, that would be a better solution, that if they are coming here, that there'd be, that the federal government would provide assistance to the local law enforcement agencies in the forms of funding and training and so on and so forth, to be able to handle events that go on outside of the facilities. We kind of watched this whole process go on. As you read and probably heard, about a week or so ago, the Senate voted for a military funding bill that would also prohibit the detainees that were held in Guantanamo Bay from being brought into the United States. It appeared, at least last week, that the president was going to sign that legislation, you know, things could happen in the future. So, John, our attorney, had prepared a resolution for your consideration, and basically, that resolution was not so much a "don't send them here" sort of a statement, but that, but it suggested that if they were coming here, that we do provide, that the federal government do provide the, or does provide the type of assistance that we would need locally to be able to handle, things that could crop up here. And we talked about some of those things at the city-county-city meeting. But we have, since that time, given what happened last week, we've sort of put that resolution sort of on the back burner. If you're okay with that, we would just continue to watch, and if things begin to change, begin to bring that forward for the city council's consideration. If you would prefer, we could bring that forward at a next meeting, just to go on, so that the council can make some kind of a position statement, if that's what you would like to do. But for the time being, we have put that on the back burner pending, you know, we continue to watch it and see what the needs are for the future. So, that's the direction we have taken so far. The next item that we have is, I just wanted to kind of update you on the building activity for the year, for the month of October compared to October of last year, and then the year-to-date information. You'll see on, I provided you with a breakdown of everything that's going on for all the different types of repairs and so on, but if you look at the last page of that information, probably the key is that for 2015, our total permits are pretty consistent with where they were at last year, down slightly, down about 3.8%. Total valuation, though, of work that's actually being done in the community has shot up this year, so we've gone through year-to-date, I think that says August, that should be October, through the October, we're at 6.5 million, and last year, 8 million, this year, so we're up 22% through October of this year, so that's good. Even though the permits have been down, kind of what that tells you, that we've been getting a little bit larger projects that are being undertaken. Our permit fees that we've collected, pretty consistent. Use tax, though, you'll notice, is down, that is related to our incentive program that the council has passed for construction in our community. So, generally, good news, things are happening in the community as far as construction activity goes, and hopefully that'll continue to pick up going forward.
Doug, is the use tax waived or deferred?
The use tax is deferred until, what is it, December the 17th? It's waived until December 17th, if they haven't got their projects, John, correct me if that wrong, if that's wrong, if they haven't got their projects completed by the 17th, December of 17, they could be...
Then we could ask for a reconciliation, and the probable fact is that sales taxes will have been paid either within the city or without the city, and to the extent the taxes have been paid, there would be no use tax that would be collectible, even if they fail to complete their projects by the end of, by the deadline.
All of these projects, more than likely, are going to be done by that time, so it's probably revenue that we will not be collecting. Projects that come in in August of 17, those are projects that may not be done by the end of the...
So, just to clarify, the, if they complete it by December of 17, the use tax is waived?
It's waived.
All right, okay. Thank you.
I'm going to just add to that, our increased sales taxes could reflect actual sales taxes paid by these people that weren't collected in the pre-stimulus way as use taxes.
And just, you know, for example, one of those projects that came in in recent time would be, say, Jimmy John's, you know, a restaurant. We have talked to Jimmy John's there, I've reported to the mayor, Jimmy John's is very complimentary of the city helping them to get in and get up and get operating, those revenues would have been waived, but at the same time, probably everybody in this room has driven through Jimmy John's already and has paid sales tax, so hopefully that's helping to push our sales tax up, as our attorney just pointed out, so, again, good things, good signs, so.
Next is ordinance number 12, series 2015, second reading of additional appropriations for the 2015 budget. Clerk, read by title, please.
This is a bill for ordinance number 12, series of 2015, and ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2015 budget year.
May I have a motion, please? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation, we approve ordinance number 12, 2015, on second reading.
Second.
Second from Councilman Weed, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Item 7 is public hearing for the application for special event liquor permit in future of yesterday at 12, Riverside Drive on December 5. I'll open the public hearing and request a report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Moreta Sharaki and Ashley Sacks, who's here to represent the organization on this application, who has applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for December 5 between 6:00 PM and midnight for a prohibition party. Notice of the public hearing was given by posting the location. This organization has conducted a number of events with no concerns having been received by my office. This event will entail food and entertainment throughout the evening, alcohol sales at this event are being conducted as a fundraiser for the organization for the restoration of the St. Cloud Hotel. Individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband, and those underage participants will receive a black X on their hands. Volunteers from the organization and the on-watch group will be checking IDs at the sole interest to ensure legal and drinking agent will assist with patrolling the premises. Got the on-watch group? Okay, both volunteers and the on-watch group have a... on-watch group? Okay. Both volunteers and the on-watch group have attended liquor training offered by the city. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fee has been submitted, the diagram meets the filing requirements, the applicant has obtained permission to use the premises, and the organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I open it up to any questions you may have of the two ladies.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilwoman Frida.
Evening. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
And is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
There will be between 10 and 15.
And how will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
They've all attended the classes provided by the city.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing? You would like to say anything more about your event?
It's our second year doing the prohibition party. Last year, it was held on December 4, I believe. This is a costume party, and it is, of course, for adults 21 and over. It's a fantastic time. Everyone dresses up. It is a period costume party, 1920s. Don't even think about wearing jeans because you'll get turned away. Everyone dresses up. It's a great time. We have period drinks. We do our very best to ensure that everyone who steps into the Robeson Mansion on that night feels like they are transported to the 1920s. It's a fantastic time. We do have a silent auction in addition to the sale of drinks. All the money from everything at the party, from the silent auction to the drinks to the admission, goes directly to the Future of Yesterday Foundation, which sole purpose is to renovate historic buildings, including, of course, the Hotel St. Cloud, which, as we speak, is receiving a new roof. At the party, we will be showing part one of a video that documents the new roofing project. So everyone at the party will have the opportunity to see where their money is going while having a great time.
That does sound like fun. So break out your flapper outfit, huh?
That's right. Find your beads in the closet, gentlemen. Dust off those hats, suspenders. It's a fantastic time.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience? I'll close the public hearing and request a motion from council.
I move that we approve this application for special event liquor permit for the Future of Yesterday.
Second.
And a motion from Councilwoman Frida, second from Councilman Bates. Any discussion on the motion?
Probably want to pull myself off of this one since I am on the board of the Future of Yesterday.
Okay. Is anybody object to Councilman Sharaki abstaining?
Go ahead and vote no. See what happens.
Gentleman wants to recuse himself. I would, I would suggest that you allow it and not complicate matters.
Couldn't pass it up. I don't have a problem.
All right. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki recuses himself. Approved by unanimous vote.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 8A is Resolution Number 21, 2015, adopting the 2016 budget. At this time, we'll request a report from the Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We submitted a proposed budget prior to the October 1, 2015. Subsequently, we made it available for public, for inspection. We had an open hearing on 19th of August, on the regular, 19th of October, on a regular council meeting. And subsequently, we made some changes to propose budget. And the list of the budget adjustment is provided to you for your approval. Two funds, we made the changes. General Fund, $44,000 in total. That relates to 11,000 is because of the combined regional communication authority has approved now budget. So we have to make the adjustments. And $33,000 because the street department has, has appropriated this year budget for equipments. They are transferring, they are not going to purchase this year and roll it over for next year. So combined total of that transaction is $44,000 in general fund. There is no approve, there is no adjustment on Conservation Trust Fund. We are also requesting some adjustment on the Quality of Life Funds. Quality, as you know, the Quality of Life Fund is for grant-related projects only. And these adjustments are strictly because the several grants are not being spent this year, and they are going to be rolled over that project for next year. And also subsequently, we are adjusting the grant revenue for the next year. And that total amount is $370,465. And detailed list is provided to you. Water depart, water fund, don't have any adjustments. Stormwater utility, don't have any adjustments. So in Resolution Number 21, we have attached the Exhibit Number A. You will be approving that, including the, all the new adjustments, what we identified in general fund and Quality Life Fund, and staff is recommending for approval. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from council? So I'll need a motion then. Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 21, series of 2015, adopting the 2016 budget.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Member Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida. Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
It's just like in Congress. All right. Next item, 8B, ordinance number 15, series 2015, first reading the ordinance appropriating sums of money for budget year 2016. I need three to introduce. Councilman Exstrom, Councilman Weed, Councilman Bates. Clerk, read by.
Before it's introduced, could I suggest it be amended to say Resolution 21 that you just adopted instead of 22?
I believe we can make that change. Clerk, read by title, please.
Third one. I, I got Councilmember Exstrom, Councilmember Weed.
Councilman Bates.
Sorry.
This is a bill for ordinance number 15, series of 2015, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2016 budget year.
And we have another report from Finance Director.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. You just approved the adopted, an adopted Resolution Number 21, series of 15. Purpose of the ordinance number 15, series of 2015, is to appropriate this funding. By appropriating this fund, you are authorizing us $24,784,111 of expenditures and $501,900 of total, total of transfer out. That amounts to a total appropriation of $25,286,111. We are recommending to, for approval of this ordinance.
Any comments or questions from council? Any comments from the audience? Their budget. All right. May I have a motion, please? Councilman Bates.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation. We approve ordinance number 15, series of 2015, on the first reading. Second.
Second from Councilman Weed. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida. Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Who are they? Okay. Item 9A, Public Hearing, Special Review Use for 323 North Sixth Street. I'll open the public heari, hearing and request a report from the City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a request for a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit, a new one, at 323 North Sixth in the R3 High Density Residential District. Notice was published and the property was posted at least 15 days prior to this public hearing, as is required. Mr. Lee's single-family home is located on the southwest corner of Sixth and Harrison Avenue. His ADU will comprise about 447 square feet of the total 1,900 square feet of living space in the home. That is a former garage and shop that will be converted into living space. The surrounding uses are residential. Surrounding zoning is R1A and R3. There is existing water service and sanitary sewer. The applicant is the owner of the property and the ADU is planned to be his residence. The applicant meets the requirements and the intent of Chapter 1715, which is the accessory dwelling unit regulations. The applicant is providing adequate off-street parking as required. We have reviewed this request and support its approval contingent upon the conditions that are noted in your staff report, and I will read them verbatim. We suggest that the applicant comply with all requirements of Chapter 1715, accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations, as such regulations pertain to the ADU requested, an ADU in an existing single-family home. The applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary, and obtain a certificate of occupancy if that's so required. The applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District, unless otherwise modified by this approval or other subsequent decision of the city council. As it may apply to this request, all material representations made by the applicant in its application submitted and/or in any public hearing shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result in the revocation of this approval. And last, the approval herein granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application, a new ADU in an existing single-family home, and will terminate if the ADU has not received a certificate of occupancy within one year of the approval of this special review use request. There was no response to the posted or published notice of this hearing. The Planning Commission considered this application at their regular meeting on October 20. They recommended approval with staff recommended conditions in a unanimous vote. And I would like to point out that at that hearing, the zone district was described as R2 medium density. The zone district is actually R3. However, the setbacks are not affected. The minimum lot size is the same. And so that was just a misstatement. And Mr. Lee is here. If you have any questions of him, or I will answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Lee, do you have any comments?
I just want to say that the city's been super to work with. Ms. Burnett has been super. And good evening to all of you as well. I'm welcome to sign any questions or answer any questions you have.
Counsel, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Lee, just, just for our record, I take it that you agree with all the recommended conditions read verbatim by the planner.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
I have one.
Councilman Bates.
If he needs an extension on a one-year ADU, is he eligible for one?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
That, that'd be up to the building official.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any comments from the audience? All right. I'll close the public hearing. Next is ordinance number 16, series 2015. First reading, I need three to introduce. Councilman Weed, Councilwoman Frida, Councilman Bates. Clerk, read by title, please.
The bill for ordinance number 16, series of 2015, and ordinance amending Section 17.24.050 of the municipal code to add there to a new subsection identifying a certain land use permitted only by special review, accessory dwelling unit located at 323 North Sixth Street.
Need a motion. Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Members of council, make the motion to approve ordinance number 16, series of 2015, on first reading. Second.
Second from Councilman Bates. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Very well. Okay. Item number 10, Public Hearing for the Royal Gorge Park Master Plan has been tabled to a future meeting. Last on our agenda is citizens' request to speak to city council. And I understand we have one troublemaker that wants to approach the city council this evening. Is that correct?
Great news, yes. We have received one written request to speak to council this evening. It's from Lisa Heims, 403 Royal Gorge Boulevard. She wants to speak to council about upcoming holiday events.
Lisa, we should just put you on the agenda all the time.
Pardon me?
We should just, we should just put you on the agenda, you know?
I have a ton of them. But thank you very much for letting me address all of you. And I'm hoping to reach a broader audience on Channel 191. I just wanted to make everybody aware of the events we have coming up for the holidays. Mr. Dotson already mentioned the Christmas tree lighting on November 27 at 5:30 PM, right there at Fremont Drive, Main Street, really where 16th Street comes into Maine, the big spruce there next to the Welcome to Canyon City sign. It, uh-oh. It's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have Christmas caroling, and it's our inaugural Christmas tree lighting there. And we like the location of that tree, and, and we just invite everyone to come down and be a part of this celebration. Is there something wrong?
No.
And then, and that's on November 27. And then on November 29, we have our Deck the Halls. This is our second annual Deck the Halls, where we have Christmas trees, that live Christmas trees that we're decorating on Macon Plaza. We have 15 trees designated for nonprofits and five trees designated for community trees. We want to make sure we have enough trees there for when the kids come down to decorate, that they can have a lot of fun. Again, the chamber will be providing the trees and the lights, and everyone that comes down can bring homemade ornaments. We are bringing the leftover ornaments from last year so that people will have other things to choose from while decorating. But it's going to be a fun event with hot chocolate and donuts and cookies, and, and hopefully the weather isn't going to be too bad. And then all those trees will be moved out onto Main Street and plugged in and lit throughout the holiday season and, of course, be there for the Parade of Lights. And that brings us to our third event on December 5, the Parade of Lights, 6:00 PM on Main Street. It's presented by Quick Stop, and it's going to be a wonderful parade, candy canes and Christmas carols. And we hope to see everybody out there on December 5 at 6:00 PM. And if anybody has any questions, they can call the chamber at 275-2331. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Harmony is adjourned.